And it's collaborative. We work on good communication skills, critical thinking skills. So it relates directly to our profile of a learner. We shared some action steps for each of our pillars in our strategic plan at our last meeting. So some critical steps that we are taking just as a district overall, just to move us forward in our strategic plan. And through all of this, you know, something that we've asked all of our staff to do is really embrace that concept of continuous improvement. We're an amazing district. We have a lot of great things happening here. So our goal is to be a little bit better every single day and get a little bit better every single year. And that's the goal. Just keep moving forward, keep getting better at what we're doing because we're doing great things. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, but just how can we continue to serve our students better and serve our community better as well? All right. All right. So want to give just kind of overview of the school report card process in general. So we've been, we've had school report cards in the state of Wisconsin since the 2011, 2012 school year. And that format has changed several times over the course of those years. Somewhat to frustration to districts when you're trying to look at some good longitudinal data. Some of the changes have been for good, but it also has made it difficult when we are, you know, trying to make comparisons with how we've done over the years. So the four weighted areas that we're looking at are achievement, and that's in ELA and math, growth for our students within those, within those subjects from year to year, and then target group outcomes. So that's, that's how our lowest score in quartile of students, how they're doing in those four weighted areas. And then on track to graduation is on its own, four things within that, and that's chronic absenteeism, graduation, third grade ELA, and then eighth grade math. So elementary then would only have the third grade, third grade, or third grade ELA on their report card. So the formula is a little different for each school as well. And when you look at the priority area weight, how it's weighted, that's, that's different from district to district, and that changes based on the number of economically disadvantaged students. So that's one of the reasons we say when you're, when you're looking at overall scores, like it's always with the asterisks, right? Because, you know, we might be looking at achievement and great, we can do that just, that's apples to apples. So achievement, you know, it's going to be the same from, from one district to another, but when you look at the overall scores and the percentages, that's going to be very different from all the different districts, depend on their economically disadvantage, depend on their English learners, all that weighs into a very complex formula that, that changes things along the way. This year's changes. And there were some big ones. Number one, they updated the performance rating levels. So they, so the significantly exceeds, exceeds expectations, meet expectations, and meets few expectations. Those levels changed by just a few points. And then third grade report reading is reported on, on this document, although it does not affect the score. We kind of wish it affected the score because our, our third grade team and our elementary team did an amazing job with, with those new requirements. So it's on there, but it, but it's not part of our score. Test participation rates are now noted on the front page if you fall under 95%. For a long time, it used to be that if you fell below, you got dinged really hard by the state. That ding has not happened anymore, but they are now putting it front and center for folks to see because there, we've seen test participation go down kind of since COVID, and which, as a state that is, and they're trying to get that back up. There's updates to the achievement score and data process. There's, there's been some reports of big, big swings for some schools, for some as much as 15 to 20 points on this because of how they have redone their scoring. But DPI has not released any report on that. We do know that the vast majority of schools did meet expectations or above this year on the state report card. So not comparable to prior years, and again, this is according to DPI, looking at the overall scores and ratings. So looking from year to year, it's hard to say, oh, we went up because some of the scores have changed. So again, we take all of it with a grain of salt. The priority area scores, because they're, the change in formula, it's kind of hard to compare those year to year. And then the achievement component scores. The comparable scores to prior years, we can look at the growth, and that is comparable. We can look at attendance and absenteeism. Nothing has changed for those, for those formulas or rates. And then the, and the graduation rate as well. All right. So overall, even though we're not supposed to compare to last year, we landed a 74.1. And, and really, we've, we've gone up the last two years now. So we, we were up from 72.4 last year. I believe the year before we were 71 something. And we're exceeds expectations district, and we maintain that. But again, here's what we really like to look at here is that achievement score. So when we look at our ELA achievement, math and our math achievement, we are still well above the state in those averages. And you can, you can see that on that front page as well. So our, the top dark blue is us, and then the light blue is, is the state numbers. And when we look at the rest of our conference, we are the highest in, in the conference for both ELA and math. So we feel pretty proud about that. Again, we're doing, doing some great things, and our goal is to continue to grow those numbers. I think another great thing to highlight from us, and Mike will probably share some more on this, is when you look at our post-secondary preparation. So that and arts and music are highlighted on, I think it's the last, last two or the last three pages of the state report card. And even though those things are reported on and really awesome, they don't affect the score. But it's really unique for a district to have such high scores in all four of these areas for advanced courses, dual enrollment, industry recognized credentials, and work-based learning. Typically, what you'll see from a district is they're doing one thing really well, maybe two. But, but here we are, right at, you know, right near the state average for advanced classes. We've continued to grow those AP numbers. Our dual enrollment numbers are off the chart. Shelley's doing an amazing job with, with those dual enrollment courses and just our, our connection with mid-state. And our industry recognized credentials are well above the state average. And for us then, that work-based learning numbers have, have grown over the last two years as well. So again, for us to be high in all four of those areas is pretty unique and something really amazing that we should definitely be celebrating. Something that the principals will, will probably talk more about as well is our student growth and target outcomes. Those are continued to be an area of focus for us. That, that was a focus for us going into this year. It's one of the reasons that we're piloting some new, new math programs as well, because we want to see higher growth numbers within our math program. Again, I'm sure you can hear a little bit more specifics here in the next couple of minutes. One other thing I wanted to highlight from just an area of growth for us, and even though that we are above the statewide average here, since, since COVID, the, we saw quite a increase in chronic absenteeism across the state. And we're hearing just from, from schools all over, all over, they're having trouble getting students back, back in the classroom. Or students are so used to having five days off for being sick that, you know, this, they're staying home for the sniffles and, you know, we're just... The number of absenteeisms has just grown. So we've, we've had lots of conversations with our team about, okay, we got to make sure we get butts in seats and got to get kids here. Obviously, if they're sick, we don't want them here. But we got to have those good proactive conversations about the importance of, of school attendance. So that is another area of focus for us as well.
Kind of like a broken record after what Ryan just said too. But yes, I compared to last year. Overall, increased just over five and a half points. Highest achievement score in our district at 81.3. So that means 81.3% of our students in third and fourth grade scored at or above grade level proficient or advanced in both math and reading. So we were just under 85%, I think in math, and 78% in reading. So combine those, you're at 81.3. Our growth score has decreased again. There are some things that are within our control on that and some things that are, are not. So what we're going to focus on is what are within our control. Typically, elementary schools are, are compared as a K5 school. So our growth is only third and fourth grade. So the growth that they make from third grade to fourth grade, but yet we're compared to all districts, all schools, sorry, all elementary schools that have another additional grade of growth. So as many times as I try to get fifth grade to come back to the elementary school, this would really help me right now if I had that. But we're going to focus on the things we can control. Highest open enrollment percentage in the elementary school, other than the charter school. Our elementary school has the number one achievement score in our conference out of the eight elementary schools, and we have the highest achievement score for elementary schools since the start of the school report cards. Now, those achievement scores are based on a two-year average. So last year, the 23, 24, and the 24, 25 school year. Listed achievement scores, so we're just comparing achievement to achievement in surrounding schools around us in the conference, and we are well above all of those. And that is combining the math and the reading together for those schools. Okay. So our goals. The top goals are the ones that, as an elementary school, we created at the beginning of the year, taking a look at Act 20, the letters to training for all of our teachers, as well as implementing it into their classroom teaching. So that is through fifth grade, we, they're included in on this training too. Inquiry-based and collaboration opportunities for students in the area of math. For K5, we're looking specifically at the building thinking classroom philosophy. It's very similar to what 612 is also looking at, to help get more engagement for students in math and to help them learn to love math, because that's something that we're struggling with right now. It's just not enough kids are loving math. So looking at how to bring some of that back. Fostering leadership within our staff and students. It's, it's so fun to watch that happening in our school. There's just a lot of people stepping up and doing extra things in our building. Because, looking at our school report card and what kind of goals we have with that, we talked at our, our last staff meeting. We're going to take a look at those tier-two interventions. So those are students that are scoring not in the lowest 25th percentile, but typically in between that 25th and 75th percentile. What can we do to help that growth in those students? Because I think that's where we can see a nice jump in, in growing. Our letters techniques that we're learning, using it to differentiate within our classroom for all of our learners, exploring those increased math engagement techniques, and try to close those target group gap scores. You know, those, the, the target students that we get a score from also are typically things that are not within our control. But what can we do to try to lessen the growth or, or grow the growth for those students and lessen that gap score? So that's elementary.
Right in the middle. Yes, that's right. But on top, of course. So we have an excellent overall score that is improving. We're, you know, 78.1 is an excellent score. In fact, we're closing in on the significantly exceeds cut score, which is around 83. As you can see over on the right, I need to sit down with the Shaiakton principal and figure out what their secret is because, you know, that's of course a goal, is I would love to get us into that five-star range so that we can work on continuing to build. Our score has improved over last year. I know that Ryan said to take that with a grain of salt, but I think it is important to honor the fact that our scores do continue to improve. We did see some area schools where scores actually decreased as a result of some of the things, some of the changes that were happening, shifts in demographics, et cetera. But it is exciting to see the middle school continue to improve. We continue to outpace state averages, as you can see on the lower left, sorry. Our meeting and advanced for ELA proficiency, you can see that statewide, 52% of middle school students are either in the meeting or advanced category, and we're at 59%. So that's a 7% increase or advantage over the rest of the state. And for mathematics, we're actually doing even better. So the statewide math percentages again is 52%, pretty consistent. And the, our middle school is testing at 66% meeting and advanced, which is a 14% advantage over the rest of the state. And as Mr. Ruggles has shared with you several times, the fact that we are, you know, a low spend and high achieving school, I think this is a testament again to the fact that the money that we're investing into the kids and the programs and the things that we're doing are paying really, really strong benefits, even though that investment is lower than some of our area schools are needing to do. So you can see on the right side that in the conference, we're actually coming in third. So I continue to chase Shaiakton and Uyghur. We're going to get them one of these days, closing in on Uyghur. And then in Portage County, we actually can claim to be the highest scoring public middle school in the entire county by, I would say, a significant margin over most of the schools in the area. So we continue to do well. I do want to say that our eighth grade math rating in 23, 24, we're 10% over state averages. And for this prior reporting year, they actually doubled that advantage. So our eighth grade class tested at 20 percentage points above what the state average was, which is a pretty remarkable achievement when you think about what 20 percentage points means in terms of, you know, number of students that are successful in mathematics. Pretty great. We really have two goals. I'm noticing for some reason, and we continue to look at reasons, I think, in the administrative team, why our growth scores are decreasing. We are looking at ways to leverage in the middle school. Our already robust RTI programs, we have many, many teachers who are engaged with delivering the tier-two interventions like Mrs. Olson talked about. And then we're also continuing to look at curriculum materials and different programs to try to close those gaps and figure out ways that we can continue to push growth. Even though our students are achieving at high levels, the report card really asks and requires for our students to continue to grow at paces that are similar to what their peers do who are achieving at lower levels. And so we need to work on closing some of those gaps. When you look at our value-added growth scores, which is taking into consideration the, some of the factors that are beyond our control. So the value-added growth scores, if you look at your middle school report card later, there's these like charts with these bars that go across. I should have put a visual. I apologize for that. But we are above state averages in almost all of those categories, actually in all of those categories. So when you look at counting for the things that are beyond the school's control, we are still doing well in growth. But for some reason, that growth number is dipping. So I think the RTI program is the best way for us to intervene there. And then our school-wide in the middle school, our attendance rate was flat at 94.3%. So we continue to brainstorm and look for ways to engage students, to engage families, to engage other stakeholders so that we can promote school as being the most important place for students to be at all times, whether that's letters home to families, meeting with students for whom attendance is an issue, having teachers reach out to families and encourage that attendance as often as we can. So those are the two goals that we're focusing on when we reflect on the report card. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the high school overall, the report card was good. I think it was 68.8. But I mean, down a little bit from last year. We can't come apples to apples. Three of our four priority score areas were very similar. But our growth, which I couldn't figure out, and I was looking into it, and we've been going round and round about the growth scores. But the growth was down. I wouldn't say significantly, but that was down, which caused our overall score to drop, even though we scored a bit higher on the ACT. So it's trying to figure out. And there are so many different pieces of the growth that we're trying to figure out. But overall, we are the number two school in the CWC East, the highest achieving school in the CWC East. We had, like Mr. Ruggles was stating before, we're 30% higher dual enrollment participation in the state of Wisconsin, which is good because we're getting our kids college and career ready. That way, we're at 39.7%, where the state average is 26.6. And for industry recognized credentials, we're above the state average as well at 7.1, Wisconsin up five and a half. So overall, our kids are doing what they need to do to get themselves set up for what's life after high school, which is the reason we're here. So we have goals, growth in math. Our math growth was significantly lower than the state average for whatever pieces they were looking at. So obviously, doing, piloting these new curriculums, finding professional development for teachers, finding new ways to teach the content and prioritize the importance of math to students. These are all things we need to do. Our, we test around the state average, right around the state average line in math, and that's usually one of our, that is usually our lowest or our closest to the state average, where everything else is quite a bit above. So it's finding ways to get the students to buy into what we're trying to teach them and get teachers to teach things in different ways that students can relate more to. And then like the other buildings' attendance, our attendance, I think, was around 10% higher than the state average, but it's still, in my opinion, not where it needs to be. It, since COVID, it has dropped considerably. So we need to stay ahead of attendance by sending letters, contacting families, use truancy court, which I did two weeks ago. So I mean, if a kid's just not coming, it's, you got to take that next step. So ended up going, using the truancy courts and communicate effectively to parents regarding attendance.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
On finding new ways to teach content and professional development for teachers, although it's the same thing, I mean...
It's in a way like having that person come in and observing and giving feedback because it's...
Observing other colleagues, you mean?
That's another way too. But we had that, we're, you had the bill question, that's, that person has come in, observed people, and then tried to help them with new ideas for what they're teaching.
What would you return this score to?
I would like to be 95%, but that's, that's what it used to be way back in the day. But it's, there's a lot of struggles now between the new mindsets since COVID, the mental health issues, where there's a lot of other things that are playing into it. But being over 90% would be, I would like 95, but I mean, just getting to even the 90, 92% threshold. But I think 95 is that good number, in my opinion, is what I'm hoping that eventually we can get back to.
Lots to celebrate with TRCCS. We had another score increase, so the second year in a row for our school. Last year, the growth scores at TRCCS historically have always been strong. So I know you look there and you see 100% growth. Historically, the growth scores have been really strong. And I think the real celebration is the gap that we've closed in achievement. So achievement historically at TRCCS had been lower with a really high growth score. But if you look at our achievement score, you can see in English language arts, we have surpassed state average in growth, or achievement in English language arts. I mean, really closed it down in mathematics. So that's like the really big celebration. Yeah, we did, oh, you get a chance to see the little asterisk as well, or the notation for test participation being low at our school. So yeah, a lot to celebrate. Our, our score did continue to jump. We were one of the schools that had a significant difference from one year to the next, but it has continued the trend of growth at our school. Our goals are, are really focusing along getting out some of our math achievement to increase. Obviously, encouraging test participation of students has to, to be one of our goals. And then we have an attendance challenge that's also a little different. Most of our school, over 80% is open enrolled and are traveling from a great distance. So I, we, we have to look at our, our attendance goals slightly different because sometimes the weather for an in-town student might be fine to drive, but if you're coming from, you know, Mosany or Wittenberg, it is a little bit more challenging to, to increase our attendance. Last year and this year, we have changed some attendance processes to reach out to people, communicating ahead of time, and making sure that people know, like, hey, we're still in school, even though the weather may be tricky. So those would be our three goals. I'm going quickly because I have a whole nother school to talk about after this one too. too. So any questions about TRCCS? Huge celebrations, like great, great things at our school. One thing to know also, this is a K-8 school, so you know, and Sherry mentioned, like, the growth is only from third to fourth, we, we are able to have the whole gamut, right, from three to eight supporting our data. So that is one thing to note. TRCCS, we use alternative, an alternative rating. We are making satisfactory progress at TRCVS. Our students do take the state assessment, but they are required to come onsite or do the test in person. So our test participation is, is quite low. We do host a session where people can come to our school campus to complete the test, but obviously, some people are coming from a really great distance. DPI did this year allow for a pilot of taking the test virtually. We signed up, we were accepted to do the virtual pilot. I got all the information about the virtual pilot, and the scores would not have counted for the kids this year. So they would have done the pilot, would have counted for nothing, and then they would have had to take the test again in the spring. So I said, no, thank you. So we were invited to participate in the, in the pilot, but we did not do it. So we will continue to host an onsite session. Our goals, then, we use, last year, we used a program called FastBridge to, to do some assessments of students. Our goals are going to be slightly different this year because we're using iReady as our universal assessment. So these, the goals that I have there listed were the goals that I had for last year based on a FastBridge assessment, and we achieved both of our goals. That equates to us having satisfactory progress. Yes, so we'll be setting our new goal. We just completed in October our assessments, and we'll be setting goals based on that information for this year.
All right.
TRCVS questions?
Just to highlight, there's only two ratings, either satisfactory progress or no progress.
Correct. Yeah.
I don't like that word satisfactory.
Yeah, it's pass or fail.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Okay, so I also did some digging and looked at special education information, just because in the target population, when you look at those areas on the report cards, that includes ELL students, includes low-income students, and includes special education students. So the last two years, so I looked at the achievement data, and I kind of did some calculations to see the percentage of students that scored in the advanced or meets proficiency on the ELA in math testing for the whole district. And I definitely noticed that our, at the elementary level, students scored significantly higher. We had more students in the advanced and meets proficiency areas than, and it kind of really started to decrease once they got to middle school and then significantly decreased once they got to high school. So that is definitely a trend that I noticed for both ELA and math. Our students with disabilities at that elementary level, like I said, there were quite a few that were in that advanced and meets proficiency that we were above the state average at the elementary, which is really good, because that's often not typical for students with disabilities when they do the testing. When I've worked in other districts, a lot of times, they're not above the state average at all at any of the levels, so I was very happy to see that. But obviously, there are areas we need to continue to work on. So just some goals overall. I noticed that at the high school level, there's less test participation, so you know, I would definitely like to encourage more students with disabilities to participate in that state testing, because obviously, the more students that participate, you know, the better, the, the more reliable the data and the results. And then also overall, in ELA and math, math even more so, just really working with the special education department and staff and just looking at the direct instruction time in those areas and kind of working within our master schedule to just see, you know, what we can do to increase that direct instruction time for students, because that's going to, you know, be a really big, have the most impact for students who really struggle significantly. And then that ongoing staff professional development is really important. As you guys have heard me say, special ed staff have really had that professional development with the listening reading system and really that science of reading training elementary. Last year, this year, we focused on our middle school special ed staff. I would like to work with CISA V moving forward for next school year to have some of our middle school and high school special ed staff obtain additional reading instruction training to really learn about science of reading strategies to work with those older students, because teaching older students how to read is a little bit different than working with older students. So that's something that I plan on doing, and I plan on doing a day-to-day with the special education teachers too, just so that they can kind of get an idea of the data trends and get some, give some input to my liberal thoughts about what can be helpful to make that happen to these students. So any questions about that? And then looking at that post-secondary preparation trends, kind of what Mike talked about at that high school level, so obviously, there's just data available at that high school level for students with disabilities as well. So when I looked at like the state average, participation rate versus our district average at that high school level, so you can see, we're above the state level, and this is comparing students with disabilities at the state level and students with disabilities at the district level. So in all those categories, we have a higher rate of participation than the state level, which is excellent. That is, again, not always very common in districts. So you know, again, you know, Shelley does a really good job too of working with special education students and their families, and then with the special ed teachers to really encourage participation in those. Encourage that to happen. So any questions about that?
Excellent. Thank, thank you to the, to the team. They've had some amazing conversations with their, with their staff already, and you know, the conversation we're having with, with our staff is, this is one piece of the puzzle. It is, it is just some information that can help us be better, so we're, we're looking at it, having good conversations at every level, yeah, how we can improve, improve the data, but also just how, how we can get better every day, and how we can improve our business here. Want to highlight, you know, as we were talking about statement point card being better and some of the, some of the challenges of attendance and other things, you know, we talked a little bit about AI. Nick used Gemini AI to create this life for us, actually. So put it, put in our presentation, said, give us a summary of this presentation, and here we are. So thought it was kind of a good example of the power of AI and just to show the full word to anybody from Washington, just how powerful that tool can be when used right. Any, any questions?
For me or the rest of the admin team?
Excellent. We've got amazing staff that's doing great stuffs. And the great admin team. Thanks, guys. Thank you. Thank you.
Is that AI-generated too?
No. No. That was Ruggles generated.
All right.
Virtual superintendent.
A lot of the informational items. Future board meeting dates, December 15th and January 26th. Any reason why you would change those? February 16th, March 16th, April 27th, May 18th. That's the rest of your school year. State Education Convention, January 21st to 23rd. There's Center of Milwaukee, and there's the Green Hotel, St. Paul last year. We had our PTU report ready, there's a student council report tonight, and we've already had our administrative supervisory reports. Where was there another?
I think there's one from Adam Miller, so there's a new report, but yeah.
This is Adam's report from Athletic Department. Football, we won Level Two game against Brilliant, 2013. Unfortunately, we lost around three to Mayville, 26 to 21. Boys played tough and were one play short of winning it. It was a great season, and the whole community appreciates what they did during the season. All-conference players, first-team offense, Tyler Loken, Joe Buduski, Gibson Kenyon, Aiden Nerdall. Second-team offense, Michael Buduski, Sully Perkins. Honorable mention on offense, Cannon Hodges. First-team defense, Sully Perkins, Judah Cole, Aiden Nerdall. Second-team defense, Gibson Kenyon, Jesse Blenker. Honorable mention, defense, Tyler Loken, Cannon Hodges. Offensive player of the year, Aiden Nerdall. Assistant coach of the year, Mike Sablinski. Congratulations to all those gentlemen. All-evolved all-conference, Ivy Hook, first-team player of the year, Alexis Wershaw, first-team, Leah Kisting, Kinsey Martin, Holly Singer, Kaylee Leeback, all honorable mention. Soccer, all-conference, we lost to Arcadia in the second semifinal, 2-0. This team played well all year and ran into a buzzsaw. Very proud of all their accomplishments. Community appreciates what they did during the season. All-conference players, first-team, Shaden, Abbott Beversdorf. Defense, Aiden Cosda, Innet, and Janek Zeromski, Looney, Milo Graham, Andrew Helfbot. Second-team, Isaac Snyder, and honorable mention, Oliver Smith. Little-school boys basketball, they were already halfway through their season, and they are playing good and learning the fundamentals of the game. They have a home game today versus Bonn, Rollin' Four, 4:00 PM, and are at Iowa on Thursday at 5:00 PM. varsity girls basketball, we have our first home game Thursday at home versus Tri-Cow at 7:00 PM. We play at home on the 25th versus Rochelle. We meet her at the Oshkosh Arena on Saturday, the 29th versus Watoma. varsity boys basketball, the boys will start practice today, and their first game is at the Oshkosh Arena versus Watoma on the 29th versus Watoma at 7:30. Wrestling starts today, their first meet is on December 4th at home. This is an invite. Boys hockey, hockey, their, their first game is on Saturday, the 22nd, at home versus Baraboo at 7:00 PM. Girls hockey, they have their first game on December 2nd at School Field at 7:00 PM. Dance, dance has their first competition on December 6th at Annapolis. And bowling, bowling has started, their next competition is on December 14th at Watson. I am delighted to congratulate all of the other conference honorable, honorable mentions for the other sports in addition to the world of football. So congratulations to all, and thank you, Adam, for that great... Okay. Character count, I'll just go bicycle here. On the campus here, I have our summer elementary middle and high school, we're at 951, he's up from the last one. Charter, tomorrow, community charter school, brick and mortar on campus, here at 97 students, that's holding steady. The virtual charter school is at 91, still growing. And total district enrollment from October is 1,239, it's up near above last month. Let's keep going in that direction. Right. It's everybody's wish. We have consent agenda, that if you address anything separately from that, just make a motion to approve it, we'll pull that out, otherwise I'm looking for a motion to approve it as presented.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Any questions or concerns? Any none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda is passed. Moving on to discussion action items, starting with review and possibly approved charter school, overnight extended grade four camping trip to Parrot, or is it Parrow? Parrow?
It's Parrow. Parrow State Park.
Travel loan, Wisconsin, April 29th, or May 1st. And we got a, is charged that, there's a document that explains all the details. This is an annual event. Is it? This is new? Oh, okay. All right. Any questions about that? Or is that we're done? Or a motion to approve?
I think a motion to approve the trip to Parrow State Park.
I'll second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm curious. Review and possibly approve Spanish club overhead extends to trip to Costa Rica, this is coming June. That's an annual event, kind of rotates, they had it from Spain last year, so Costa Rica's been a destination.
Yeah, it's June the 27th.
Yep.
Is that the same travel agency that they typically go through? What's the name of that?
Uh, I have to look in documents to see the name of it. I, I know they go for it because it's, it's a kind of hybrid, it's some hotel time, but it's also some personal stays, and they like that aspect of the trip.
Okay.
Interact. Inter, yes. Yeah, they've been using that.
There it is.
Yeah, they've been a good company to work with.
Same number, same number come home that go there?
So far, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Lose any enrollment.
Had some close calls, but...
Any other questions? Not? Certainly, the motion to approve?
Motion to approve the Spanish trip.
Second. Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On the same subject, review and possibly approve recommendation for snowplow purchase. We talked with Dale in the finance meeting.
This has been kicked around quite a lot, so...
Yeah, I think we're pretty comfortable now.
Yeah. We've asked a lot of questions, and Dale came back. So thanks, Dale, for following through on all that.
That's all the details. Questions for Truck USA?
A motion to approve the snowplow bid from Truck Truck USA to replace the existing plow?
I'll second.
Motion second. Any other questions? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On the same subject, review and possibly approve recommendation for snowplow services. We discovered that no one can compete with...
Current provider.
Current provider.
Mm-hmm.
So the recommendation is to continue with Buduski.
Yep.
He's been great for some years, and the price has not increased.
I'll make a motion, we continue to, Buduski provide us with snow removal.
Second.
Motion second. Any other questions? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Buduski. Next item, review and possibly approve health insurance provider quote. This has been looked over with a fine tune with code by everybody here.
Mm-hmm.
This is where we're at, is I thinking like I am about this.
I just, we, we've continued to work with security and push on them a bit and ask them some, some questions, and you know, a virgin, our broker, has been great to work with that process too, and you know, they, they originally started with 11.5 increase, and we were able to get it down to 8.5. Now, when you look at last year, we were 0%. That, that averages out a little bit better, that 8.5 over two years. As we, as we asked around a little bit for those that were seeking renewals for this time of the year, a lot of, a lot of folks are coming in double digits and way higher than even the original number that we got from, from security. So we feel pretty good about that 8.5 moving forward for the rest of this year. We did not get any competitive bids. Last year, Anthem put in a competitive bid, and all of them declined to put in a competitive bid this year. We pushed on, we pushed on them for just some more information why. Got some short answers about our claims have ticked up kind of at the end of the summer into the fall. I don't know if I would quite agree with that, with that look, especially because as our, as our people, you know, spend down their deductible, of course, claims are going to go up later in the year. I mean, that only makes sense. So I, I don't know if I buy that rationale. I, I think overall, the market's just really unclear right now and not super stable, so that's my personal opinion.